Please stand for a plug. Moment of silence for our troops in active duty.
Mayor, the council introduced themselves to the state of my right.
Calvin Brown, District One. Anthony Demato, District One.
Jody Zell-Daglin, District Two.
David Vills, District Three.
Dave Proleski, District Two.
Aaron Fortier, District Three.
Don Quixote Rizque.
Assistant Donald Labella.
And then Mayor Ken Cartier would like to welcome the new council. And it's good to be back as mayor, that's the only. So, item number two.
Proof of minutes of the regular city council meeting on October 13th, 2015, and special meetings on October 6th, 2015, and October 13th, 2015.
It's all moved.
Motion to main session at discussion. Hearing now in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number three, public participation. Ed Dotcom.
Mr. Mayor, did you warn them about me? All right, congratulations to those who are returning.
I'm gonna let you break 'em in.
Oh, I will. Well, I've got something for you tonight. Again, congratulations to those of you folks who are returning and to the new members as well. Now, as far as the new members do, you know what I'd like to see? You gotta do what the folks that in your district want. Do what the folks that you're supposed to be representatives. You gotta listen to what the folks in your district want. You gotta be more bipartisan, you know, for the sake of Bristol, you know? It's always been folks just always just voting along party lines. You know, I won't tell you who I voted for. I won't tell you who I voted for. But it is, it's getting a little hot here.
Shut up. I got an electric coat, I gotta shut it off.
I do. I'll get it off.
Is that environmentally sustainable?
I won't tell you, I won't tell you who I voted for. It is too hot. Okay, I gotta take my coat off.
Your black is too thick.
Again, I ain't telling you who I voted for, all right? But, you like that? But, you know, what I do like is your idea of finding referendums. We need to do that. I mean, on the big ticket items, the controversial things in town. I look back, we have my family, Boogren versus Bristol, the southeast Bristol Business Park. I'm sure if that was on the referendum, we would still be there. I'm not keen about all heart Bristol, because like I said before, my mother was in her teen years. She lived there for over sixty-six years. My father's dying and she say to your soul, you gotta move eminent domain and they're offering you thirty-seven cents on a dollar. That was, it was just horrible. If that would've went to a public vote, we'd still be there buying them all, shipping it on vote. What are you gonna, what are you gonna do with that depot square site now? I hope you have referendums come next year. It'd be so easy. But more able of our school, too, whether or not the folks, you know, they'll let the folks make the decision instead of seven people. You know, that's all I'm saying, okay?
Thank you.
Then, my brother will talk about the southeast Bristol Industrial Park. Because there's a lot of things I don't like about, a lot of things have changed. Let me know that there's some contamination issues behind the old sphere electric building that would see ESPN North Campus. My brother does a lot of legwork by going to the DEP, but he'll fill you on that.
Thank you. Michael Dirkel.
116 Lewis Road. Yeah, I wanna just specifically, time's limited, address the item number five E tonight. You wanna sell, the city of Bristol wants to sell lot number two of the southeast Bristol Park to Uniprop. One, I've been, for the last three, four months, I've been here talking about how rules are being broken in rules and regulations in the park. And as far as I know, they still haven't been changed. There was one that says, "Middle Street Redstone Frontage Property Shall Demonstrate Sensitivity of Design as a Corner Facility." I don't think that happens with ugly rusty boxes. There was another one, "Frontage Along Middle Street Should Be Occupied By Corporate Officers or Manufacturers, Not Distribution Facilities." I've been harping on this for four months now, and I don't think anything has changed. You're breaking the law. And finally, there's supposed to be two people per thousand square feet of floor space in the building. There's a hundred twenty thousand square feet coming in. And there's, let's say, let's say three-quarters of it, ninety thousand. There should be a hundred eighty employees. That is in the regulations. Those are laws, and they're still being broken. Okay, online specifically. This Uniprop company you wanna sell another lot to is described as being a real estate development and private equity investment group. They have no track record in this city. You sold them eleven acres, and now you want to sell them five more with no track record at all. A total of sixteen. It's still up for a bunch of ugly rusty boxes. The people on Bayberry Drive and Surrey Drive were promised fifteen years ago that they were placated by the zoning commission and the planning commission that this was gonna be a nice business park, an industrial park, and it's not turning into that. The four new coming council people are coming in tonight. Online, there are eleven pages of this document. I bet you haven't even looked at it yet. You're gonna be asked, four new people, actually one returning, Mr. Bills is returning, but you're being asked to vote on something you probably don't know anything about. There are eleven pages to the selling of the second lot. Personally, there are inland wetlands on Lot Two. There's a habitat that needs to be protected there, a large inland wetlands. Thousands of wild orchids called pink lady slippers grow there in the spring, and nobody cares about them, I guess. I just see that a lot of, a lot has been ignored. I've been talking about this for four months. I do not believe, the only thing you changed was the number of acreage for a distribution who was originally limited to five, and I don't know, you just upped it to nothing. Up to no specific number? It's gonna turn into sixteen acres for a distribution facility? Ugly rusty boxes in the future. Unfair to the people on the northerly border. That was not promised to them fifteen years ago. It was supposed to be a business or industrial park. It's not turned into that.
Thank you.
Frank Kramer.
Hey, and I care about lady slippers, especially pink ones, so there's so many difference. I'm Mr. Frank Kramer, I live on Forty Crescent Drive in Bristol. And is it possible, because I wanna talk about two different subjects, I can have two, three minutes, seconds of time?
Yes, Sean, I want to give you some of his time, you're welcome.
Okay, take it, take it. If you need it, take it.
Sure. Malone and McBroom, that is the firm that we're going to be using to let us know if there are better alternatives to synthetic turf. We're soon to spend two and a half million dollars on it. And it appears to have, it appears that this firm, Malone and McBroom, has never seen saw tested or smelt and visioned synthetic turf field they didn't like. As in, almost never. And that's regardless of the increasing numbers of athletes, young athletes, who are succumbing to premature lymphomas. Leukemias, brain cancers, and neurological disorders. And the list keeps on growing, growing larger. And the one thing they all had in common, by the way, were years of playing on synthetic turf fields, particularly the ones that are filled with chrome rubber. Okay? And these tires come from everywhere between China and Cincinnati and places I've known, so we never know really what the content of these tires are. But you know, it's interesting. You can't put used tires in landfills because they're hazardous waste. But yet, we are determined to put these tires, crumpled up, modified to some extent, on surfaces where kids are playing. It's kind of like the height of an obscenity, if you know what, something else I'd rather not say. But my real concern behind the feasibility studies for cost, safety, and health and environmental impacts to Bristol taxpayers is this. Is that I think it's important, this is Penancy Alderan from nonprofit EHHI in North Haven, Connecticut. I think it's important, she quotes, that it's important to know that these guys are also installers. Did you know that? They're also installers and construction managers, less than thirty-two fields. So, what we have here is someone or an entity that's giving us advice on something that's almost predetermined. That it's almost like some people have observed that we're putting the fox in with the headhouse. Just, you know, words to consider, facts to observe and think about as we proceed onwards. And I think we're spending some more forty thousand plus dollars for these guys to do this unbiased quote-unquote study? Give me a break. Thank you.
Catherine Telfer.
Good evening, Catherine Telfer, seventy-six Chestnut Street. I spoke last month about the synthetic turf and the chrome rubber fill-ins that they have, and the dangers and concerns that I had for them. And I just wanted to revisit, there was two topics pertaining a lot, you know, Frank had just mentioned a couple of things. Pertaining to the chrome rubber infill synthetic fields that were discussed last month at the city council meeting, in which there was a brief discussion of checking into other options and further testing on the chrome rubber infill. And I'm interested in knowing, you know, the progress of both within the last month. I would also like to recommend to you with open minds that you check the Environmental Health E-Journal, where they cover the topic extensively. You can look it up online and read the report yourself. And this is what happens when you have an unbiased, non-industry study that's performed. The EHHI, which stands for Environmental and Human Health Incorporated, is dedicated to protecting human health and environmental harms through research, education, and promotion of sound public policy. They released in the journal, "The Study and Research Conducted by the Yale School of Forestry and Environmental Health," a very reputable organization and institution. In that study, you found ninety-six chemicals in fourteen samples that were analyzed. Half of those chemicals had no government testing at all. So, we don't know if there's any harm to them, if they're safe, anything about them. But some of the government testing was done in some of the samples. There were eleven carcinogens found, eleven, not one, not two, eleven. And there were twenty irritants found. And this is a study conducted by Yale. And you can't possibly expect results like this that would come from testing research, you know, for in-house. Anybody involved in the industry will not tell you. It'd be like asking a Dunkin' Donuts executive, who has the best coffee? They're always gonna go with their product. They're never gonna deter from that. And we also know that most recently, the EPA refuses to answer questions. You know, they were all up here, yes, it's fine, it's great, and lately they've been tracking on that. Refusing to answer questions or saying, "We're looking into it," which would raise a red flag for everybody. And you can imagine today that they have to admit that there's something wrong. I mean, you're spending all this money putting these fields in. What happens when the EPA determines that, yep, there's been enough research done out of house to say that these children are dying or getting cancer into their early adulthood? And the cost of putting the fields in, then what do you do? You have to tear them up, more money. You have to put in new fields, more money. And then what happens with lawsuits, I didn't wanna think about it, they'll be phenomenal. I mean, staggering, because the list grows. It's not just a couple of children anymore, or a couple of young adults. It's into the hundreds now. So, just food for thought, and, you know, just hoping that for the simple fact that somebody had a really good sales pitch when they were saying, "Let's use this tire infill, so we can do something with these tires that are laying around and we can't use in any other form." Just really, we'd like you to have open minds, look into the subject, read up on it, see both sides of the subject, not just the one. Thank you.
Sean.
How much time do I have left?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. Is there a maximum amount of time for the public?
Yes.
How much is that?
Depends if we're talking about you or someone else. It's three minutes.
I don't usually talk about me, but people that don't like what I say sure like to talk about me a lot.
Three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Well, honestly, we really shouldn't have to put anything on a ballot if people are representing the people that they're supposed to be elected to represent, honestly. But, well, I've been asking that since February of last year. And so now we're talking about it, ready for election, that's good. Okay. I don't really see where anything's changed in the direction of the city. Everybody thinks that the most important thing is to develop that parcel across the street. And at the same time, they're saying the most important thing is to grow Bristol. And I don't think that those are the same. They're not the same priorities, because the easiest place to grow Bristol is not across the street. And you could even use the state's policies and the state's money to grow what you're trying to grow across the street in Forestville with less taxpayer money, if you're really thinking outside the box. And you could do mixed use and finance it in separate parcels, and it doesn't have to be all mixed-use buildings, if you're thinking outside the box. But I don't think that's really what's happening. I don't think the public's been represented in that. And I do think the public does wanna do something with that parcel. But can anybody tell me why they think members of the public would like to build high-density housing over there? All right. I'd like to bring up something, it's called cost-benefit analysis. Usually when people talk about making community investments, they're able to explain with numbers and money figures and not just reports from committees and statements from city lawyers about what they think would be best for Bristol, or statements from people in the smart growth industry on what they think would be best for Bristol. I'd like to see a cost-benefit analysis of building affordable housing across the street, if that's where we're going. And if it's not, maybe we need to go back to the public. And, oh yeah, I have a website, it's called Bristol CT Open Government Project, and I'm putting all these city meetings on that, all right? It's got a link to my YouTube channel that has that. And I noticed a lot of city meetings people don't have access to, so I'd like to ask the city to partner with me by not giving me any money, just giving me information. I'd like to have audio recordings without having to file an FLOI. And when I do file an FLOI, I prefer not to get the answer, it's on the city website. Because, guess what? My address is on the city website, too, but every time I come here, I get asked what it is. So, there's a woman, her name is Joanna Rogalski. I didn't get her last name. She's with the Nutrick Valley Cog, and she actually gave me the minutes with my FLOI, with the other information that I asked. And it would be great if the city could cooperate with that in any way possible. Thank you.
Item number four is announcements. The announcement side of our right.
Oh, that's me now, I forgot. I'm to the far right of the mayor of Bristol.
I do that. That's how we see today.
Obviously, the first announcement is, "Thank you for the opportunity to continue serving the First District." I heard a lot of comments from the public tonight about working together and about setting an agenda for Bristol that represents all people, and specifically the people in the districts that we represent. And I want you to know that that is my goal. I know pretty much everybody up here well, the people that I've served with, and some of the people that I've gotten to know over the last campaign season. I would, I don't think it's going out on a limb or stepping on anybody's toes to say that that's everybody's goal, to work with one another and to put forward an agenda that represents the citizens of Bristol well. But I also want to put it out there, for this council meeting of this new term, that not only should you expect dissenting opinion, you should encourage and welcome dissenting opinion. That's something that I didn't maybe articulate very well in my first term, and I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity now to say that I believe, and I have always believed, it's okay to disagree with the people that you work with, and it's okay to have a different view, and that it's actually a healthy thing, because that's what working together is really all about. Everybody puts forward their ideas, and we work together to sort through them and figure out a plan that works. That's the pronouncements for me.
Thank you, councilman.
I would also concur with Councilman Brown that, yes, all opinion is valuable, and that we must work together, and I also plan on doing that. In other announcements, I want to announce that the Bristol Brass and Wind Ensemble has a Veterans Day concert tomorrow, the eleventh of November, at Prospect Methodist Church, Ninety-Nine Summer Street, 7:00 PM. This is a free event, but of course, donations are welcome, and we hope to get as many people as we can to show up to that event. Thanks.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say thank you for electing me to represent the city of Bristol. I'm looking forward to it, and I concur with Councilman Brown as well. In further news, I have an announcement from Public Works. To assist the residents of Bristol with fall cleanup efforts and to reduce scale traffic during peak times, Public Works will extend the hours of the transfer station. They'll be open until five o'clock on Fridays, the twentieth of November, twenty-seventh, and December fourth, until three o'clock on Saturdays, eleven fourteen, eleven twenty-one, eleven twenty-eight, and twelve five, and until five o'clock on Monday, eleven twenty-three, Tuesday, eleven twenty-four, and Wednesday, eleven twenty-five. Leaf bag collection will continue until the end of November. Please bring your leaf bags curbside when they are filled and leave them there until they're collected. Leaf bag collection is also available to all city residents who are eligible for curbside rubbish and recycling. In addition, the yard waste services for subscribers has been extended to the end of November, and services will continue through the end, the week of November thirtieth. Please stir the contents of the collection if they are frozen.
Thank you. Just to say it's good to be back.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say I'm very happy to be here, and I'm not gonna over the point. I do have one great announcement. Bristol Central High School is, has been selected. It's the only school in Connecticut, perhaps the only school in the region, to have their, a safety driving video selected by the Celebrate My Drive group. They can, if our citizens and people who want to support the school vote for them on www.celbratemydrive.com between today and November thirteenth, they could be the recipients of a very significant, I think, a hundred?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand dollar grant. And it's all because these kids had the initiative and the guidance through a great staff up there to put together a video about safe driving. So, I encourage everyone here and at home to get on the computers and vote. Thank you.
Councilman, let me add to that. This morning, we, Bristol, was number four out of over a thousand schools in the country. And you could vote once every day for every email you have. We're resharing the link every day on my mayor's Facebook page, and I'm sure all of us who have Facebook pages are also sharing it as well. So, it's, thank you for bringing that up. That's a big thing, vote every single day. That's all. Any other question?
Thank you.
Just a couple of things. We can hardly believe that the holidays are upon us. They're coming very quickly, the first one being Veterans Day tomorrow. And I know Tony mentioned the concert at the Prospect Methodist Church. We also have city veterans events. We're celebrating this year the seventieth anniversary of the end of World War II. So, the city service is going to be at eleven o'clock at Chippins Hill Middle School. And then Forestville will have an outdoor ceremony at twelve thirty, just afternoon time, at Quinlan Park outside in the center of Forestville. The Bristol Historical Society is also busy this time of year, and they are going to continue, they've been showing lots of classic movies this year. And coming up this weekend is one of my favorites, Gone with the Wind. It's going to be shown both Friday and Saturday night at seven o'clock. And the following movie is also another one of my favorites, Rebecca, on November twenty-seventh, I think perhaps because both of them are about strong women. In any case, the following Thursday, in other words, not this coming Thursday, but the next one is part of their third Thursday presentation. They're doing a presentation on the Old Letterman. Excuse me, Old Leather Man, I didn't pronounce that well. For those of you that have never heard of the Leather Man, this is a hobo, essentially, that walked a loop between Connecticut and New York for about thirty years. He literally walked every day and made this three-hundred-sixty-five mile trek, I think it said, every thirty-four days or so, for about thirty years. He went about as far east as Middletown and into Westchester County in New York. And he did appear here in Bristol in the late eighteen hundreds. So, they're gonna do a presentation on that, it's fascinating. It's kind of, I guess, for history junkies, it's fascinating. In any case. One other thing, our video group here from Nutmeg TV is in the middle of their annual fruit sale, which is a fundraiser for Nutmeg TV. Anybody that, again, is in the holiday spirit and needs gifts, they're a great gift and going on now, and they support our partners at Nutmeg TV. So, thank you for that. And I just hope everyone has a very blessed Thanksgiving and enjoys it with their family and friends, because we won't be back till after Thanksgiving, which seems a little, that's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one thing?
Sure.
I apologize. I just wanted to say tomorrow's Veterans Day, thank you to all of you who served out there. And today is the two-hundred-and-fortieth birthday of the Marine Corps, so happy birthday to all you Marines out there.
I'm honored to serve you. We will work across party lines. I met with every council person last week, individual. We talked about our goals, talked about where we wanna be, and how we're gonna get there. Calvin, I disagree with one thing you did to set in last term, and I have every?
That's true.
So, it's every state that you will continue to do so.
And I expect that.
And we all expect that. No one wants to be someone's puppet. So, thank you very much.
Item number five.
She consent calendar, there are five items. Five A is to place a final recovery report for October 2015. Five B is to approve the tax refunds dated November fourth, 2015. Five C is the ordinance committee to introduce amendments to the Bristol Proto-Ordnances, section four dash five, Roosters penalty, to waive the reading of the amendments and to schedule a public hearing for November eighteenth, 2015. Ordinance Committee is the, also five D is to adopt amendments to the Bristol Proto-Ordnances, section sixteen dash two, pertaining to regulated activities in public parks. And five E is to approve purchase and sale agreement expired in January five, 2016, with a sixty-day extension period between the city of Bristol and Uniprop AM LLC for the sale of lot number two, Southeast Bristol Business Park.
They have a motion to a rule.
Second.
Motion to main session at discussion.
Your honor, I have one quick question on five E for the BDA folks.
Justin?
Yes, sir.
Was I understanding this eleven-page document agreement correctly that Uniprop doesn't quite know how much of Lot Two they're gonna need yet? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. One concern that I have, I don't know, so, I'll bring it up now, maybe we can talk more about it later, but one concern I have is if they're gonna use a lot, that there's still enough sp-
there's still enough space for there to be more development with another company, or they'll use the whole thing, which is fine, but I suppose it would be an unfortunate situation.
Exactly, and that's a concern shared by myself and the BDA board. Not a concern, but just something that we're state mindful of. So the idea is, as the BDA board, we have the authority, when Uniprop comes in with its design, to evaluate it, to determine what, you know, what's left, and is that enough for an extra company, or do we talk about the entire lot? And obviously, Uniprop is well aware of that concern as well.
And this agreement gives you in the BDA the, the ability to...
If, if there's a partial, partial sale, we go back to the drawing board. What this does is it gives Uniprop comfort to design the property, knowing we're not going to be able to sell it out from under them over the next, whatever, four months.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions? On favor? I propose motion passes. Committee report starting my fur right.
Yes, Your Honor, a quick committee report from the Parks Department. Muzzy Field will close up football season on Thanksgiving. Replacement of the dehumidification system at the indoor pool is in progress. Replacement of the Page Park tennis courts will start in about two weeks. The American flags along the Veterans Memorial Park and Boulevard will be removed for the season after December 7th and put back up the first week of April 26. All the pine aerators will be removed after Veterans Day. The Parks Department is currently taking registration for winter youth programs. Most classes are set to start the first week of December. Next Saturday, the 18th, the annual trophy shoot will be held at Chippins Hill Middle School. The shoot is open to any Bristol youth ages 8 to 13, and the event is free. And Your Honor, I believe I have an item to bring forward from the Parks Department as well as...
Go ahead.
A move to award contract 2C16-024 facility improvements to Muzzy Field to Demoto Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $1,397,718, and authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate said contract.
Your Honor, I wish to excuse myself. Turn the vote.
Go ahead.
Second.
Motion made second. Just give Councilman a second to get a rule. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve, motion passes. Someone grab him, please. Thank you, Captain. Any more can do their voice. Councilman?
None, Your Honor.
Does the council have a...
No, not the second. Does it?
Yes, Your Honor, from the Board. There's a couple of resolutions I'd like to put more, up a few more motions. May I read them, Your Honor?
Yes.
There's the first one is to approve a lease of space at 201 Pine Street in the amount of $2,500 per month for the period beginning December 1, 2015, through July 31, 2016, plus an additional amount of $9,000 for provision in installation of electrical services to an adjacent trailer with Tomed Enterprises LLC, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effect said lease contingent upon proper review and approval by the Office of the Corporation Council.
Second.
Your Honor, I'd also like to recuse myself.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve, motion passes. One more, Your Honor. To approve the lease of a 60-by-12 mobile office to be placed at 201 Pine Street for the period of December 1, 2015, through July 31, 2016, for a total amount of $13,419.80 with Williams Stockman, Inc., and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effect said lease contingent upon proper review and approval by the Office of the Corporation Council. Discussion, do I have a second?
Second.
Bring a second discussion.
What is this for?
Just for everyone's information, what this is for is this is a remodeling engine company for, and we need to relocate that engine company, and we're relocating them to this address, and that's what this is for. Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve, motion passes. Thank you. Councilman?
I actually don't have much. The Real Estate Committee does have some RFPs out at the moment. We don't have anything to break forward this month, but we do have lots of things in the, in the mix. The Pine Lake Committee did not meet this month because of Election Day, and the Disability Committee is not meeting this month because of Veterans Day tomorrow. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Adam, number seven.
Unfinished business, and it's a resolution to approve the Senior Volunteer Tax Relief Pilot Program for 2015, 2016 postponed from the October 2015 meeting. And there is a resolution. If the council has looked it through...
Councilman? I'll read the resolution. Into the record. We resolve that in order to promote the goals of scientific, educational, literacy, historical, governmental, charitable, and nonprofit entities located in the city of Bristol by drawing on the skills, knowledge, and experience of its senior citizens. The City Council of the city of Bristol hereby establishes a Senior Volunteer Tax Relief Pilot Program for senior citizens who choose to donate their time, talent, and experience by volunteering to provide services to such entities as fathers. A, qualifying senior citizens who volunteer to provide services to qualifying scientific, educational, literacy, historical, governmental, charitable, and nonprofit entities located in the city of Bristol shall be eligible for a tax credit on their real property tax bills and in accordance with provisions hereof. In order to qualify for the benefits of the Senior Citizen Volunteer Tax Relief Pilot Program, taxpayers must be age 65 or older, own real property in the city of Bristol, must occupy the property as a principal residence, and must have an annual gross income not more than the maximum amounts promulgated annually by the Connecticut Office of Policy and Management in accordance with CGS Section 12-170A, A, B, 2. Participating senior citizens may earn an annual tax credit of $300 by performing a minimum of 50 hours of volunteer service in a fiscal year to qualified nonprofit entities. B, the program shall apply to volunteer work performed in fiscal year 2015, 2016, and after in accordance with provisions of this resolution and the guidelines and policies referred to in paragraph D. The tax credits shall be applied to the tax bill due July 1 following the fiscal year in which the work is performed. C, the tax credits earned by the participants in the Senior Volunteer Tax Relief Pilot Program shall not exceed $24,000 in a fiscal year on a first-come, first-served basis. D, the assessor and senior center executive director shall develop guidelines and policies to administer the Senior Volunteer Tax Relief Pilot Program, including guidelines for qualifications for participating seniors and participating nonprofit entities, and for timing and form applications.
Do you have a second?
Second.
You have a second. Any discussion?
Excuse me, having trouble. Again, it's moving from one spot to another, just not getting myself situated. But I did have questions because at our last council meeting, we talked about sending this back to ordinance to change the amounts. In other words, I know this is being called a pilot program, but for the new folks, we did this last year, so it's really the second year of a pilot program. But we had discussed the idea of raising the income level slightly because these folks qualify for a lot of things, and apparently we only had about 10 participants last year. And so we were thinking if we could help the folks in the next level of income. I'm not sure we have the authority to do that. I'm also not sure who this would get referred to because, in other words, apparently the ordinance committee feels they don't have the authority to make it an ordinance, and that's why we're calling it a resolution tonight. So I just don't know who that might be sent to for further discussion.
After discussing this with the former, the now former chairman of the ordinance committee, we decided that we were going to leave it as was last year. It was a successful program, and it just needs to get some more traction, and we decided to put it in the resolution anyway. Any other discussion?
Your Honor, would it be possible to, to bring in the assessor and the senior center executive director to discuss what an expansion might look like, but in a fluid sort of way so that we don't have to delay enacting the resolution?
I don't understand what you're saying. Bring them in where?
Yeah, bring them in to talk about whether or not we can expand the program to another level of senior citizens.
We did include Director Patty in this, in this discussion, so she was part of it. Our concern is the longer we delay, it's going to miss the volunteers being given to qualify this program. That's our concern.
Until the next fiscal year.
That's our concern. Because you know government doesn't move fast.
That's true.
Another discussion. Hearing none, this is a resolution, so we'll start at my fur right.
Yes.
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 Chair has, yes, motion passes. Any other new, unfinished business starting my fur right?
No.
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 Chair has, new business starting my fur right?
None. None.
None.
None.
No.
I have one. I would like to ask for a motion to, to ask the Parks Board, Public Works Board, Police Board, Fire Board, Planning Board to consider the option of closing the bottom of Willis Street from Associated Spring to Memorial Boulevard and incorporating that parcel into the Memorial Boulevard School for more parking. Did I miss any more that I need to go to? Parks? Public Works, Parks, Police, Fire, and Planning. It's named use.
I believe in the board of education only because you have sidewalks there.
Okay.
Although there's, there's no schools behind it.
Okay, worth it. Anything else? Can I have that in motion? So moved. Second, motion made second. Discussion.
Your Honor, this is a motion to refer them to take this up?
To refer to all those committees to discuss it and then actually report back.
Okay.
Motion made second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve, motion passes. Resignations.
There are three resignations. The first resignation is from Gary Hannigan from the Planning Commission. The second resignation is from Marcy Arroyo from the Bristol School Readiness Council. And the third resignation is from Jody Zills-Gagney as an alternate from the Planning Commission.
Motion to, send them to letter of thank you. Approve. Second, in second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve, motion passes. Pointings. Planning Commission to appoint Roland Loranger as a regular member to replace Gary Hannigan, an expired term to 7/31/16. Motion to that. Second, motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve, motion passes. To appoint Terry Perk to replace Roland Loranger as alternate member to become a regular member, an expired term to 7/31/17. Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve, motion passes. Youth Commission to appoint Taylor Dale to replace Michaela Rose Mohammed under, and I know I said that wrong, I apologize. Under 21?
No.
Okay, I'll close. Under 21 years of age, an expired term to 12/15.
So moved.
Second, motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve, motion passes. Bristol Downtown Development Corporation to appoint Ahmed Hamzi to replace Thomas O'Barnes, Sr., resigned, an expired term to 4/16.
So moved.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve, motion passes. Part-time assistant court counsel to reappoint Melissa Simone, two-year term to 11/17.
So moved.
Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve, motion passes. Corporation counsel to reappoint Edward Corkey Jr., two-year term to 11/17.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion.
I have some discussion. I turn it quickly. Two years ago, when we were here, we, there were a few questions asked about how your staff divides up work and things of that nature. And, you know, after having served on the council, I am concerned that we have a lot of outside council doing work. You know, I obviously don't have the budget in front of me and, you know, don't have the figures for what we've spent, but I'm just wondering, again, last year I asked you a question about what we might need or what you would want in a perfect world for staff, and I'm just wondering if perhaps we do need another attorney in your office and what your thoughts are on that.
Counselman, we actually had a fair amount of discussion about this subject with the Salary Committee, with the Board of Finance members and others. I think at this point, the staffing is appropriate. I think that if we were to look into the future, there's a growing segment of practice dealing with environmental law, which is an absolute specialty. And, you know, you might consider doing that. And the second area that you could consider, I suppose, is in the area of employment law. We, we always have activities in every department. We're constantly reviewing that sort of thing, and the personnel director, and I often discuss, you know, the outsourced and that kind of work, but those two...
Let me also add that, under, about probably six months ago, and our personnel director can probably correct me, but about six months ago, under your direction, we added a permanent part-time position.
That's correct.
Which went through the Salary Board, which you said, and it was discussed at length there what they needed. So I don't think anything's changed in the last six months.
Nothing has changed. But it's an ongoing discussion that we've had for probably 10 years with the Board of Finance. So, you know, there are, you know, situations that we've spent millions and millions and millions of dollars on dealing with environmental questions, for example. You know, Bristol is an old urban center with a number of brownfield sites that require an awful lot of specialty work. So, you know, I mean, you asked a question, in a perfect world, that might be the one area, but I don't think the city is probably in a position to retain somebody like that and compensate an individual with the appropriate skill sets to the degree that they can get in the private sector.
Can I just ask a couple more questions? We don't do our own workers' comp work, is that correct? In other words, are, we hire outside council to do workers' comp cases?
Workers' comp is handled pretty much now by PMA. However, in our office, Attorney Lacy does a lot of the heart and hypertension work.
Okay. What about foreclosure cases, like when the city is foreclosing?
Foreclosure work has traditionally, you know, traditionally, meaning for 20-plus years, been an area that we have referred out to outside council because in most of those cases, it is just easier to have outside counsel. In most of those cases, the compensation for the attorneys and the like is retrieved from the party that the foreclosure action is brought against. Rarely, I won't say never, but rarely does the city pay for those costs.
Okay. I would think that if they didn't have the money to pay their mortgage, I'm not sure how the cost get paid.
Well, you'll recall, well, actually, maybe, maybe we don't actually get into that when we get to the Real Estate Committee, but what happens in the process, the city has a policy with all of our foreclosing attorneys that indicates the city really does not want to take properties in what's called strict foreclosure. I know you know what that is, but for all the rest of you. Strict foreclosure is a, is a series or a sequence of events where we simply take the title without trying to sell the property. And it means the second type of foreclosure is foreclosure by sale. The policy that the, the city has adopted, and I've instructed all of our outside counselors to always do foreclosure by sale. In the event, there are situations where we need to take title for some specific reason, they need to now come to the Corporation Council's office, and we will then discuss whether that's an appropriate action on their part. There have been a few situations over the last, I don't know, maybe 10 years or so, where we've actually taken on property that becomes a very difficult thing for us to market or sell, as you well know from the Real Estate Committee side of things. So I'm trying to, you know, cut that process off as much as I can at the, at the very beginning where we bring the foreclosure actions. And most of our actions, I'm sorry, Counselman, it's really from these other folks more, most of our foreclosure actions, just so you understand, is based on taxes that have not been paid or code enforcement work that we're doing and the liens that we put on. And in some cases, the amounts of money are significant, you know, tens of thousands of dollars. of dollars and even more. Those tend to be the properties for us that we end up taking title to in the end.
One additional question. What about conflicts of interest? I mean, how much would you say that we've had to spend, and I'm not looking for a specific dollar amount, but, you know, in round figures, because of conflicts of interest?
There are occasional events where we've had to, you know, send out for outside counsel. Whenever there are parties, two parties within the city government that have, you know, a councilwoman and someone from a board, let's say, we can't represent either of you, so both of those go out. We've had any number of those kinds of situations. There have been a few situations in our office where we've sent out files because they're just areas that aren't appropriate for us to keep in-house. But in general, I would tell you that the conflicts are most often related to dual situations within the community or within the-
Government.
The government operation. Right.
Just a question, if I may, just to follow up. Who keeps track of the cost? Is there an audit process on these?
The Controller's Office keeps copious records on what we're spending, but our office has a drawdown on professional fee account, and, you know, we have to account for that. If we happen to be getting to the point, Councilman, where we're going to exceed it, we have to go back to the Board of Finance, justify any additional requests for funds that might be necessary. For example, not this year, but in a previous year, because of the activities that we were conducting in code enforcement, we had a much higher expenditure requirement than we had anticipated. There are sometimes needs for us to hire expert witnesses or experts in the field that we're dealing with, not necessarily code enforcement. And those items usually come out of the professional fee account in the Corporation Counsel's office.
Do you determine who to hire and how much they're paid for our office, not you?
We, yes, the answer is yes. With outside counsel, though, it's not just me on my own. I have to go to the mayor, and I get a sign-off by the mayor to indicate that we're going to outside counsel. It's the same process that we use with our foreclosure activities. You know, we try to have an active list, and I just try to make sure that it's always, you know, as fluid as we can, so we never get caught with, you know, a person, the only one doing that kind of work, so that, you know, if that person gets sick or was away or something like that, we don't have to stop.
How do we keep track of their hours? Is it just the trust factor?
No, no, they invoice us, you know, on a weekly, monthly, hourly, you know, basis or on a contingency basis. It depends on the kind of case. You know, a lot of our stuff dealing with insurance companies gets referred out, and obviously that gets handled through our policy requirements. I've actually done some audit work over the last five years. I hired a consultant to go out and attempt to collect good data points for us so that we weren't getting, for example, block build. That's a term of art in the legal business where, you know, if you pick up the phone, you bill automatically for a half hour or something like that. We try to get it down to where it's actual time being spent. We had a difficult time with the Board of Ed. They wouldn't cooperate with us in every regard, and that's a big, big nut. And I, you know, so that's one area that would certainly be helpful to us, but, you know-
Maybe a councilor or somebody on the board. But can you tell us how many times where you personally have had a conflict that we've had to retain outside counsel over the last two years?
There was one time where there was the claim brought against me, as you'll recall, by a disgruntled former employee.
And that was the only time?
That's the only time I've complained. Is there any other? I don't believe there was any other.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion passes.
Opposed. Sorry.
Want to oppose? Motion passes. To reappoint Public Works Director, to reappoint Walter Assalka III, four-year term to 11/19. So moved.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
No.
Two no's, motion passes.
Two no's?
Two, Councilman Fordyer and Councilman Brown. Motion passes. Well, congratulations. Item number 11.
Awarded Contract 2C-1616, Belt Filter Press Rehabilitation for Wastewater Treatment Operations to the low bidder RH White Construction Company Incorporated for $746,603. Authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute any necessary documents.
So moved. Motion made second.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Item 12.
Resolution regarding authorization for Mayor Kennedy Cokane to execute and file any necessary applications on the capital city with the Commissioner of Connecticut, DEEP, for designing construction grants for Bristol WPC phosphorus Reduction Study. There is a resolution to read?
Can I read it?
I'll read it. Be hereby resolved that Mayor Kennedy Cokane is hereby authorized to execute and file all necessary applications, including all amendments thereto, on behalf of the City of Bristol, as the Commissioner of the Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection, for designing construction grants and loans for the project entitled Bristol WPC Phosphorus Reduction Study, and to accept payments necessary for the receiving said grants and loans pursuant to provisions of Section 22A-475 through 483 of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Second.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, resolution starting at my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item 13.
Awarded Contract 2C-1638, Design Fuel Post-Tension Concrete Tent Sports to Classic Turf Company LLC, $250,000 in authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute any necessary documents.
So moved. So moved to a second.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Item 14.
Authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute an amendment to include a full slab spread foundation for $80,430 in Contract 2018 with needless construction regarding construction of a municipal recycling processing building.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. I'm going to go back to appointments. I didn't give the council appointments. These are council boards. And Tracy emailed everyone tomorrow before you arrived.
Not tomorrow. Thursday. We're not in tomorrow.
Councilly, Park Board Commissioner Jody Zills Gagny, Housing Authority Anthony D'Amato, Commission on Aging Mary Fordyer, Board of Library Directors Calvin Brown, Board of Water Commissioners Calvin Brown, Bristol Committee Organization Mary Fordyer, Board of Education Dave Mills, Commission on Disabilities Mary Fordyer, Bristol Downtown Development Corporation Calvin Brown, Mayor's Task on Aides Calvin Brown, City Cemetery Commission Mary Fordyer, Marketing Committee Dave Mills, your committee could decide who the chair is going to be. All right? I'm going to designate you, but you can change it on the board if you'd like. These are, do those need to be voted on? Those don't get voted on, right?
Uh, yeah.
Mayor's Women, Coppersburg Pond Jody Gagny, Pine Lake Area Study Committee Mary Fordyer, Mayor's Task Force on Energy Consumption Calvin Brown, Code Enforcement Mayor's Design Nia is going to be Guy Warren, Northeast School Roof Replacement Calvin Brown, Allen Hall School Roof Replacement Anthony D'Amato, Acting Mayor it would be Dave Mills, Salary Committee, myself as chair Anthony D'Amato, David Proleski. Real Estate Committee, Dave Mills Chair Mary Fordyer, Jody Zills Gagny. Ordnance Committee, Dave Proleski Chair Anthony D'Amato, Dave Mills. Building Committee, Dave Mills Chair, Jody Gagny, Dave Proleski. Tenure Capital Improvement, Mary Fordyer, Anthony D'Amato, Dave Proleski. School Readiness, Department of Board of Ed, Dave Mills. Public Hearing and Assessment, Mary Fordyer, Anthony D'Amato, Jody Zills Gagny. Economic Development Committee-
I missed the last. Could you repeat the last?
Public Hearing and Assessment.
What is that?
That's part of, I believe, Public Works.
It is. It's actually the same members that are on the Public Works Committee, Public Hearing and Assessment. When we have street discontinuances or acceptances, they'll be on the Public Hearing and Assessment Committee, which is just basically a subcommittee.
Economic, Mayor's Economic Development Committee Anthony D'Amato, Bristol Development Authority Dave Proleski, Board of Fire Commissioners Dave Proleski, Board of Police Commissioners Jody Zills Gagny, Board of Public Works Mary Fordyer, Anthony D'Amato, Jody Zills Gagny. Retirement Board-
On these, you do need votes.
Okay.
So they need to-
BDA Dave Proleski. Motion to approve. So moved. Second, motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Fire Board Dave Proleski. So moved.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Board of Police Commissioners Jody Zills Gagny. So moved. Second, motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Board of Public Works Mary Fordyer, Anthony D'Amato, Jody Zills Gagny. So moved.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion.
I do have some discussion here, Your Honor. I'm concerned about Anthony D'Amato being on Public Works, and I say that only because he's had to run out of the room three times already today. And I'm just concerned also for the D'Amato Construction Company because they are such an important partner for the city. In other words, they're obviously an important construction company and taxpayer, and if they're not permitted to bid on things because Tony's on the Public Works Board, you know, or he's not able to act on the Public Works Board because they're bidding, I'm just wondering if this might be something we need to, you know, refer to the Ethics Board to ask what the parameters should be and how we should deal with this.
I did look at these boards. If you'd like to make a claim to the Ethics Board, you want to-
No, I'm not.
I did look at these boards as I put them together, and I took them to consider any conflicts of interest anyone on this panel will have. And as happened tonight, and has happened with many of us, if there is a conflict, we will recuse ourselves. So I don't see any issue here.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Retirement Board Dave Proleski. So moved.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Transportation Committee Mary Fordyer. So moved. Second, motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Dave Proleski, I'm going to give you your first assignment. I'm coming from the under ordinance. I'd like you to look at the Transportation Committee and see if it is a viable committee to keep going. As I understand it, it was a committee that was formed as Route 72 came through Bristol. So just take a look at it and see, in other words, ordinance committee, please take a look at it and see if it's a commission that still should be enacted or if we could disband it. Youth Commission Calvin Brown. So moved. Second, motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Renovations Committee Engine Company Board Dave Proleski. Second.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Memorial Boulevard Building Committee Jody Zills Gagny. Move it. Second. Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. That's what I had there. Okay. Back to 15th, is that reasonable? Item number 15.
Awarded Contract 2P-1636, Professional Services Analysis of School Readiness Programs to Connecticut Association for the Education of Young Children for $17,000 in Authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute any necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Item 16.
Resolution regarding acceptance of CT Next Connecticut Innovation Sponsorship of $5,000 for grant funding for the Startup Bristol Business Plan Competition.
I'll read it.
And there is a resolution to read?
Be hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, to accept the CT Next Connecticut Innovations sponsorship of $5,000 to be utilized as available grant funds for the Startup Bristol Business Plan Competition. Be it further resolved, this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Item 17.
Your Honor, can we have a roll call?
Oh, roll call, starting at my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item 17.
Resolution regarding approval to file grant application with Connecticut DECDs for remedial action and redevelopment municipal grant program for up to $50,000 to fund continued environmental assessment activities at 273 Riverside Avenue. And there is a resolution to read?
Can I read it?
I'll read it.
Go ahead.
Be hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of the grant application to the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development for remedial action and redevelopment municipal grant program for up to $50,000 to fund continued environmental assessment activities at the tax-leaned brownfield property of 273 Riverside Avenue is hereby approved, and that the Mayor or Acting Mayor is hereby authorized to execute such application, and any and all other documents related to this application/grant, including but not limited to any final grant documents. Be it further resolved, this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Just a question. 273, can just delineate this as that or this? Sessions, Billings?
Yes, I believe it is.
Yes.
Here we go. Roll call, starting at my far left.
Yes.
And I am left of the mayor, so I'll-
We all know that, pity.
Yes.
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 Yes again.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item meeting.
Resolution regarding approval for city to enter into and deliver to Connecticut Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, federal fiscal year 2015, state homeland security grant program Region 3 memorandum of agreement, and there is a resolution to read?
And I can read that. Be it hereby resolved that the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, may enter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, a fiscal year 2015, state homeland security grant program Region 3 memorandum of agreement, including any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate, and be it further resolved that the Mayor of the City of Bristol or the Acting Mayor is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. Be it further resolved, this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second. Second. Motion made second to discussion. Hearing none, roll call, starting at my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item 19.
Awarded Contract 201643, Cleaning of HVAC ductwork at city buildings to Indoor Air Technologies